Okay, if you would please announce your name when I announce your jurisdiction. County of San Mateo.
Carol Groom.
County of San Mateo. Town of Atherton.
Rick DeGolia.
City of Belmont.
Julia Meeks.
Right here.
City of Brisbane.
Colleen Mackin.
City of Burlingame.
Donna Colson.
Town of Colma. City of Daly City.
Rod Dass-McBual.
City of East Palo Alto. City of Foster City. City of Half Moon Bay. Town of Hillsborough.
Larry May.
City of Los Banos. City of Menlo Park. City of Millbrae.
Ann Schneider.
City of Pacifica.
Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Town of Portola Valley.
Jeff Els.
City of Redwood City.
Zal Hale.
City of San Bruno.
Marty Medina.
City of San Carlos.
Laura Palmer-Lohan.
City of San Mateo.
Rick Bonilla.
City of South San Francisco.
Laura Nicholas.
Town of Woodside. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ann.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Director Emeritus.
Radhe Gupta.
And Director Emeritus.
John Keener.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ann. Okay, our first item will be a public comment. There's one item on the agenda. If anyone does want to comment on an item not on the agenda, you can raise your hand now. Comments limited to two minutes. Bruce, where's Carney? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I am a resident of Mountain View and had the privilege twice in my life to chair Mountain View's environmental sustainability task forces. The most recent task force ran in 2017-18, and one of our recommendations was that the city of Mountain View raise its utility tax on natural gas but not raise the tax on electricity. We subsequently discovered that this is not possible, given PG&E's billing software, and so I'm working with Senator Becker's office to develop a bill proposal that would mandate that PG&E update their billing software so that communities have the option, if they choose, to have different tax rates for electricity than for natural gas. There is a lot of interest in this, particularly in the East Bay, where user utility taxes on electricity and gas often comprise a significant portion of the community's tax revenue, and I understand that that's also the case in some San Mateo County cities, particularly Portola Valley. So what I am going to be doing is sending all of you an email that explains the proposal in some depth and ask you to sign on as individuals and perhaps to forward it to other elected officials in your communities. The reason for doing this is that Senator Becker's office feels that there would be a much easier path to introducing this legislation and passing it if city officials and county officials indicated that it's something that they support, even if there are no immediate plans to change the utility user taxes in their community. I see that I've used most of my two minutes, but I would be happy to answer any follow-up questions that any of you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce. We can't really discuss anything at length during this public comment period, but I look forward to seeing what you're suggesting. Sounds interesting. I look forward to reading it and following up with you directly. Thank you. If there are any other public comments, again, not on tonight's agenda, not on the topic on tonight's agenda, now'd be the time to raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to take action to approve the, to set the agenda.
So moved, action to set the agenda?
Seconded.
Moved by Donna Colson, seconded by Rick Bonilla. Roll call vote, please.
If I may, I can do the roll call vote, but we may need to swear in Colleen Mackin.
Yes. Counsel, is that, should we swear Colleen in first? Does that make sense to me?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. Just give me a moment. I need to pull up the oath real quick, if I could. Sorry for the light in the background.
You put that tie on really fast.
I know.
And Colleen, I did email you the swearing in document as well.
Okay, I'm looking at it on the screen.
Okay, you don't, you don't, you don't have to worry. It's, it's, you're just gonna repeat after me, so, you know, having it in front of you certainly doesn't hurt, but I promise to go super slow. If you could please stand, although no one will know any difference if you don't, and raise your right hand. And I'm gonna say aye, and then after I say aye, if you'd please state your name and then repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, Colleen Mackin.
Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. And I know I shouldn't play favorites, but you're one of the best oath takers I've ever had. That was, that was really, that was really good. Okay.
All right, thank you, David. And Colleen, welcome. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to acknowledge you before, but welcome to the board. Look forward to working with you. With that, I think we were doing a roll call vote to set the agenda. Ann, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And if you would please announce your approval or disapproval of the motion when I announce your jurisdiction. County of San Mateo.
Yes.
County of San Mateo. Town of Atherton.
Yes.
City of Belmont.
Yes.
City of Brisbane.
Yes.
City of Burlingame.
Yes.
Town of Colma. City of Daly City.
Yes.
City of East Palo Alto.
Yes.
City of Foster City.
Yes.
City of Half Moon Bay. Town of Hillsborough.
Yes.
City of Los Banos.
Yes.
City of Menlo Park. City of Millbrae.
Yes.
City of Pacifica.
Yes.
Town of Portola Valley.
Yes.
City of Redwood City.
Yes.
City of San Bruno.
Yes.
City of San Carlos.
Yes.
City of San Mateo.
Yes.
City of South San Francisco.
Yes.
Town of Woodside. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to our one and only agenda item, which is a discussion of the California Community Power Joint Powers Authority Agreement. What I'm gonna do is turn this over to Jan to give sort of a quick summary of the, of the letter or the staff memo we all received, and then I will turn it over to board members to ask questions of Jan. Then I will take public comment, and then we will have a final round of board discussion. And then, and we're not taking action on this, but we are trying to basically set the stage for, for, for this to come forward at our board meeting in two weeks. So again, so Jan will start board questions. Ann, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have a council meeting tonight, and I have to leave to get ready so that we can do all the pre-testing. If, is the meeting tonight being taped so that I might watch what I miss?
I believe it is being recorded. Is that?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. All right. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Jan. And again, so we'll just quick, quick summary, and then we'll get into questions. Go ahead, Jan.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight to the study session at the board meeting that we had in December. It was requested by a few of the board members that we have a study session so that we can answer the questions that you all had. So what we have done is created an FAQ document that was sent out to all of you, and hopefully you've all had a chance to look at that. Basically, what we're doing is we are asking for your approval to join this new Joint Powers Authority, which is called California Community Power. It is made up of, it'll be eight or nine CCAs, and we will be using this JPA to do joint action on projects that benefit all of us together with the idea of increased efficiency, cost savings, and, you know, being able to do things that we may not necessarily be able to do on our own. So we went through this in December. We captured all of your questions, and we put out a FAQ. I think it's 13 pages, 23 pages of answers to questions, 38 different questions. So I think I would, you know, because some of you need to leave soon, what I would ask is that we just go directly to your questions. So if there's anything in this memo that you want further clarification on or further explanation, I would suggest we just do that to, to most efficiently go through it.
Okay, couple of things. Please use the, please use the raise hand button in Zoom to get my attention. I'm not sure I can see everyone on the screen at once. And also keep in mind, the first round is gonna be questions. Everyone will get a chance to sort of offer a comment and opinion at the end, but right now, we're, please just limit this to actual questions about what's in the, either the FAQs or your own other questions that'll come up. So please raise hands in the participants box, and I'll start calling on people for questions. Anyone? Okay, if there are no questions about, no questions about this, then I'll move on to the next thing I was planning to do, which is to ask for, are there comments from the public? Question, comments from the public on this. James Regomes, go ahead, James.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, honorable JPA members. My name's James Regomes. Many of you know me. It's good to see y'all here. I sat on the original committee, the advisory committee, before the PCE was formed and the JPA was formed, and I sat on the advisory committee afterwards, up until last year. As you guys know, my name's James Regomes. I am a representative of the San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council, as well as the first vice president of the Labor Council. And when the PCE first formed, it was important to have all labor, all of the different public entities involved to ensure that we would all support the PCE and the PCE endeavors. In you guys' agenda, I seen, or in your, your questionnaire, I seen, in the questions and answers, in the future JPA, the, whether or not the work would be built, union or non-union, and I just wanna remind you of the, when people ask me what a union is, it's working families standing together. And working families platform is earn a decent wage, healthcare for you and your family, something to retire on that also gets reinvested into infrastructure projects, and skilled trained workforce through our apprenticeship program. I wanna ask you guys, please, don't deliver affordable power to our constituents by driving construction workers into poverty. People ask me what a union is. It's working families standing together, and we'd like to ask you to stand with our working families and make sure that you remember Article 10 of our, of your guys' agreement, that, and strongly encourages the use of project labor agreements and prevailing rate on all new power sites. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope you guys have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, James, and thanks for all of your work on PC in the last several years. So, well said. Okay, any other public comment on, on the question of CCP? Okay, I don't see any other hands up from the public, so I will move on to board discussion. Rick Bonilla's got his hand up. Go ahead, Rick.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna thank first the staff for going and putting together this document with all of their responses to many questions that I see were presented. And I think I want to thank the whole board for participating by coming up with so many good questions. Some of the responses to the questions raised other questions for me. For instance, in response number 21, where we talk about voting, what I think I see is that it looks as though it's one JPA, one vote. Is that correct? Does somebody have a response for that?
Yes, I can respond to that. This is Jan. Yes, at the very beginning, when a project is being proposed, the, it is one, one member, one vote.
So this doesn't take into account the fact that some areas have more ratepayers, use more load. It's kind of a situation to me reminiscent of the US Senate, where Rhode Island has two senators, while California has two senators. Is there a possibility that we could seek to change that?
Well, it's, it's, there's three phases for the agreements. So the first phase, yeah, if you can slide down to that diagram. The first phase is where a project is, is brought for exploration. And at this phase, each participant in the JPA has one vote on whether or not to pursue that project. So, and then, when you get to the second phase, then each CCA kind of has a vote in terms of what percentage of the project they're going to take. So question 21, the way we interpreted it, the question said, if PCE voted no on a specific project in San Mateo County, can CC power move forward with that project?
That right.
So, for example, if a project was, was proposed in our county, but we were not interested in participating in that project, but a majority of the other members of the JPA were interested, yes, they could go ahead and have that project move forward.
Right. But that wasn't really my question, because the question of, you know, voting, how much weight each entity's vote has, right, was a question that came up in my mind for this. Okay, so, since I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, during, when you asked for questions, I missed that part. So I'm gonna ask a few questions if that's all right.
That's fine. Alana, did you want to respond to this?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in on that specific question of the, you know, that it's one member, one vote. That is, that is the way it's set up for this initial phase of deciding on whether to, you know, go forward on, with a project. And at this point, I, there is unlikely, you know, to be room to negotiate that to be a vote, like by load share, if that's what you're, if that's the alternative you were asking about. I think at least five other CCAs have signed on at this point to the JPA agreement, which does, you know, provide for one member, one vote. So it would probably be, I think it would be very difficult to, to negotiate that at this point.
Okay, so I have a question to follow up with that. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, just keep in mind, if we've, you know, if there's a, if a project comes to that in a phase one, a project comes to CC power, we vote on it, and we vote no, we're just, we're done with that project, wherever it is. I'm just, so it's not, it's not like, it's not like the rest of them, it's not like being in the minority forces something on us that we don't wanna do.
Thank you. What I'm getting at is, if there are questions that are not on RFOs or power purchase agreements, within the JPA itself, like about, shall we have some policies that you, we use for guardrails as we're going down the road? How do the members' votes count there?
I think at that point, when, as we're setting up kind of our, the way we would operate as a JPA, similar to how PCE operates as a JPA, each member of the JPA has one vote in terms of what the policies are going to be. So it would be the same for this, for this JPA.
Okay, and then next I'm gonna ask about actual guardrails, because PCE, in the beginning, created guardrails, which included lots of different things. We have our, you know, numbers of policies that cover many different things, including policy 10, the workforce and labor policy. And it seems as though now we may need some guardrails to protect our guardrails, because as we seek to become, and first I wanna state, I support forming and becoming part of this new JPA. I see the great advantage in purchases that can be made and in the furthering of increasing the new sources of renewable energy, especially the long-term battery stores we're looking at. But I have some questions about how it's done. Okay, so, for instance, if PCE were to decide, well, we have our policy, we'd like to be able to, you know, defend our policy as we go forth with this new JPA, could we raise a discussion about forming policies similar to ours at this new JPA, and could we seek to assert our policy, at least for discussion, in, in the furtherance of possibly forming a policy that would say something about labor rather than the current, I don't know what?
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, good. Would you do that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. I know, I asked a few questions, and I looked around. I read 1720, labor policy, California Labor Code 1720.6, about the prevailing wage, and I see that it starts off by saying, any construction project that's paid for, any public construction project that's paid for in whole or in part by public dollars should pay the prevailing wage. But then I see that it also has a loophole, I call it a loophole, where it says, unless it's on private property, right? I think that in light of our policy, we should actually seek to make sure that the worker's always being fairly compensated. And I think that it's possible for this new JPA to state in its policies, and to when they send RFOs out for responses, that we do expect to see the prevailing wage paid on all construction projects, and that means whether they're on private property or not. We can do that. We could specify that. So is that something that we could, you could present to this new JPA for us?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I mean, as you know, I can't guarantee that there will be a majority that will support that, but I will certainly put that out there.
I'm just asking, and I'm looking for a champion, Jan.
Yes. And you're welcome to come and provide public comment at the meetings, because they're all gonna be public.
Yeah, right. I know. Thank you. So that's kind of basically, those are my questions. I'll have some comments later. Thank you very much. Those people can talk.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, Ann's got her hand up. Ann Schneider, go ahead, Ann.
Thank you. First, I apologize. I didn't get questions to you. I think mine are gonna be similar to labor and councilman or to Mr. Bonilla, only in regards to the environment. Also, having been, before I was elected, an environmental person coming to the meetings that created PCE, advocating not just for renewables, but for green renewables, and not all renewables are equal. So I was a little concerned last month when we voted for a wind project in the Tehachapi's that already exists without at least asking them where they are on environmental criteria. And I believe, Director Jan, that you said, well, you know, we won't have as much say when we become part of the JPA. So I would like to know if the other JPA, the other CCEs or CCAs that we're joining with, do they have similar environmental criteria that we have? Because we worked, just like we worked hard on labor, we worked hard on setting up good environmental conditions, you know, building as close to local as possible. Can we get that information? If they're on the same page as, as we were in the establishment of this PCE, then I'm okay.
I, I believe they do. I'll ask Siobhan, I think Siobhan is on here, because she's been dealing with some of the other, like, right now, we're doing a joint RFO with San Jose. So she would, she would know more closely what the other CCAs do as far as their RFOs and their environmental requirements. But I think we're all pretty aligned on that.
Okay, I did get, what was this, from Nature Conservancy, their Winter 2020 magazine, where in the Midwest, they are looking at areas for wind power that will have the least effect on birds. So it can be done. I can show you the picture right here. I can send the studies. I know that this work is happening, and I know that it's happening in Europe, that they are looking at a set of environmental criteria, and I wanna make sure that we hang on to our environmental criteria as much as we hang on to all of our labor criteria. And then my second question, and this is something what related to Mr. Bonilla's question about, or no, it's question 12, I think, where San Francisco and San Jose get a few of their own, they get a few carve-outs, it sounds like. And I'm a little bit concerned. My city is, our major landowners are San Francisco, and if you use the airport as an example, they can do quite, quite a few very noisy industrial projects without coming to San Mateo County for land use approval, and we are left with those issues. We also have a lot of SFPU sealand, so that's Hetch Hetchy. We have a water filtration plant for the Hetch Hetchy system, which could have wind power there. That might be a great place for wind power, but if it's noisy, right now, we're getting hit with enough noise impact. So I just wanna know if San Francisco and San Jose can do their own thing. And I am a former Saffir of City of San Jose, so I know how a big city can get its own way. How are we gonna stand up? And where is little Millbrae within this, within PCE gonna defend itself from any additional environmental deprivations that we're already existing for the greater benefit of the community? SFO is a benefit to the entire Bay Area. We pay the price.
Okay, let me answer your second question first, and then I'll go to your first question. So question 12, where it talks about San Jose and San Francisco, the reason they're called out separately is because they are CCAs that are not joint power authorities. They are CCAs that are departments of their cities. So they have different administrative requirements to get things approved in their cities, and that's all that that has to deal with. It's just the administrative, the, the different approval process they have, as opposed to coming to their JPA board like we do, and like all the other CCAs that are JPAs do. So that's all that that addresses. They don't get any special treatment. It's just noting that they have a different approval process, because they are cities rather than JPAs. Regarding your first question about the environment, first of all, for any project to be cited, you know, they have to get approval from whatever the jurisdiction is where that project will be cited. So they need to have local approval from the county or the city or wherever it's going to be before the project can go forward. And, you know, I know that there are there are lots of areas of the state and that have specific requirements on that. And Siobhan, if you're, I see you're here, if you wouldn't mind just jumping in and adding to that response, if you have, if you could.
Yeah, I think, I think to the earlier question, the CCAs are all pretty well-aligned with their interest in environmental, making sure the projects are cited carefully. We're going through some analysis now on the initial RFO to do that, to look at both land use as well as for different types of technology, what are the environmental impacts. And then, as Jan mentioned, any, whenever we go out for an RFO, and this is pretty standard, we ask developers where they are in the permitting process. And then depending on where the project is located, there might be a different entity that's in charge of permitting a particular project.
Okay, I hear you, but I'm going to give you at least one example. The EIR that covered expansion of the airport and the new hotel that was built absolutely did not have to go through San Mateo County planning. And that project has advanced considerable noise, changing the direction from it, which will be coming out in a ground-based noise study. But, and noise is not often considered in a lot of environmental documents. So I just, then I just want to go on the record then, that noise is a subset of energy generation, and we need to start considering it in our evaluation of criteria. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay. I missed a public comment, I apologize. Tom Enslo wanted to say something, and Tom, I'll call on you now, if you can unmute yourself, go ahead.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. I know it's technical difficulty when you had public comment. This is Tom Enslo on behalf of IBW Local 617. Local 617, as of now, opposes the California Community Power JPA Agreement as currently drafted on the grounds that, for a couple of reasons. One, we don't feel sufficiently vetted for its terms when negotiated. And because of that, it creates a complete end run around both the board's oversight authority and PC's longstanding policies to ensure that it procures energy from companies that commit to paying their workers fair wages and benefits, and demonstrates commitments to hiring a local diverse and inclusive workforce. Staff's brought you this agreement as a done deal, with no opportunity to weigh in on the terms negotiated for this agreement. And we find that, you know, very problematic, particularly because we feel that this is, this shows how this process is going to happen in the future. These projects are going to be presented to you as done deals, and you're going to be told either to take it or leave it. And you're not going to have any input, you know, very little input on the terms of the negotiations. It takes away local control, you're going to be one of at least nine CCAs. And, you know, as more members become involved, there's going to be very little control over what these projects look like, where they're located, and what the terms are as you move forward. You think that there, you know, that this agreement needs some tweaks, both to address workforce issues, but also, you know, liability issues for PCE and more oversight, and more opportunity in terms of what projects are going to be negotiated, and what the terms of those negotiations are going to look like. And so, we know that five CCAs have already adopted this, but the four big ones have not. There's still time to go back to the drawing board on this stuff. We encourage the board to do this. But if the board does move forward with this, we support the proposal that have PCs representative at least be a strong advocate for adapting workforce policies, have this JPA adopt workforce policies, you know, at least requiring prevailing wage, and have that be the first order of business before anything else happens. I think it's really important to protect the workers, and to protect the commitment that the PC has really made to the community, and to local workers, and to making sure we have a diverse workforce here. So, you know, we have a real problem with what this looks like now. We hope that there's an opportunity to fix it before you move forward. We encourage you to talk to some of the other CCAs that haven't signed this yet. And if it does go forward, to be a strong advocate for workers at the new entity. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Rick Benia's got his hand up again, go ahead, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, you're muted.
Yeah, there I go, thanks. So, thank you. I wanted to, you know, kind of tag on one thing Mr. Enslo just said about the workers. You know, in my mind, the reason that we originally created our policy was because protecting labor. And I know that it sounds unlikely that we can actually get something into the actual current agreement between the JPAs right now. But going forward, okay, we need to recognize that the reason we created our Policy 10 was because the workers were there at the early times, helping us form and supporting PCE, because the workers know this is important. Significantly, the workers are the community, okay? And the community supports PCE. And that's why I think we should reciprocate by offering strong support for working people. So as I want to make some additional comments, as I went through the documents, I felt as though, Mr. Enslo partially referred to this, several times, it seems like things, especially the wind project was just approved, the Wind River Farm project in Tehachapi, where it's brought to us, yes, it's being built, but no, it can't be prevailing wage, it can't be a PLA, but it fits our energy needs, and it's a good deal, so we have to take it. And I know that, we want to get that kind of deal. It does fit our energy needs, and we need, but we, I'm really, I'm really ambivalent about standing on the backs of people who aren't making the wage or the benefits they should be making for that workforce that should be done. That work needs to be done by skilled and trained professionals who went through an apprenticeship program and actually understand what they're doing, right? And I have some serious misgivings about that. When this was brought to us last, in December, I wasn't really, I know that in the question about, you know, why didn't we hear about this before, the response is that, well, there were some other communications, and I think they were in the CEO's, CEO report to the executive committee, and it may have been in the CEO's, CEO report to the board at large. But they weren't presented as some large thing that's coming, that we're going to be asked to go forward with. And we weren't really given much information. And in fact, an RFO was issued with PCE's name on it before we even knew anything about it. And this, I feel really strongly that any RFOs that are going to be put forth in the future should be brought to our board, or at least to the executive committee, before they're issued, so that we can decide whether we want to be part of this or not, whether we can try and maybe put some guardrails around a couple of things to protect certain interests that we care about, before we decide whether or not to take part or not. I think earlier information can be had on this, the better off we are. In regard to, in regards to the question about unbundled wrecks, the response was, well, it's unlikely, because most entities either don't buy them, or, you know, it's unlikely, which is not definitive. Okay, we have a policy that says we don't, right? That should be something we need a guardrail around. Again, and the voting issue that I brought up earlier, I think that, in the questions that will be raised around policies and different formational things at the JPA itself, there needs to be more than one member, one vote, because some of the entities that are looking to join are definitely smaller entities. And we don't want to end up in a situation where decisions can be made for us by having some other entities that don't hold the same interests, and yet to get one vote regardless of their size of load or ratepayers. So I want to thank our CEO for the positive answers that she gave us to the questions that I asked earlier. I understand that you can't guarantee any outcomes, but I'm really saying that I and some other people that I know are interested in helping you to bring as strong of a presentation as possible for protecting working members of the community when it comes to doing this or any work. So those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Rick DeGolia has his hand up, go ahead, Rick.
Sorry, I was muted. I have two questions. The first is, as a study session, I assume that this meeting tonight is just going over this joint powers, or the CC power JPA, so that we can better understand it. But if the purpose of the meeting is to take an action at the end, then let us know, because I don't know if, if there is an action item intended here.
No, this is, this study session is just, this item is discussion only, that we're not taking an action.
Right. So that's what I had assumed. I think that it would be very helpful to have a statement of kind of what the overriding purpose is of the CC power JPA, and how staff sees that, and I know this has been discussed before, but since we're in the middle of it, I'd like to focus on a couple of the really big issues. And what, and the biggest issue for me is how this will enable us to achieve certain things. What are the specific benefits that we expect PCE to obtain from joining and helping to launch this organization?
Jan, do you want to answer that? Because I think there's an answer to that, I just...
Yes, happy to answer that. Basically, that's in the first, the first question. So it's really to do joint procurement at a higher level of scale. So, you know, if we were to, if we were to find that, for example, pumped hydro storage is the best thing that we could do to, to meet one of our goals, the amount that, that we would need, that those are, there's a very large projects. And we would not be able, as a single entity, to be able to make a project like that happen. So we would need to join up with other entities to do that. So by forming this JPA, we already, we have in place a process to move forward on something like that, and not have to negotiate every time on, you know, what are, how are we going to do this together? So this, putting together this joint powers agency just gives us a framework for moving forward on projects like this. Another area that we've talked about with our other, the other local CCAs, is how we all have the same back office needs, but we're all paying a lot of money to one company for those back office needs. So is there a way in the future that perhaps we can consolidate what we need there and reduce our costs significantly for that, for that type of work? So, you know, the first thing we're looking at is this large laundry mission storage, because that's something that's high-profile right now at the PUC, and with the reliability issues. And it's also, working together shows the PUC and other regulators that, you know, they don't have to be trying to follow what 23 different CCAs are doing, which drives them crazy, because they're used to looking at just three IOUs. But if we're working together, it gives them comfort that we are, you know, working to meet the needs of the state, and trying to do it together, and it'll be easier for them to understand what we're doing. And, you know, it provides economies of scale for us.
Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Just to follow, are there any, are there any projects contemplated, maybe long-range contemplated, not, not, you know, right before you, and that you haven't begun to put an RFP together, but are there any other projects that you can foresee that we may want to do with others? I fully understand and support and recognize the value of increasing our, our size. And, and I mean, I think this group, the formation of this group creates an entity that competes with PG&E in terms of the market poll. And that's really valuable, I get that. Are there any other projects that you're looking at beyond this large storage project that you're thinking we may want to use this group for?
Not, not at this time. I haven't been in any conversations about what, what other projects we might do. So this is really, from, from my, thinking back on the conversations we've had, it's really just this, and also the back office work.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sure that we will find some other things that we want to assess. I do think that, like Rick Benia's comment, that it was a surprise that this came to us. We just need to put in process a mechanism so that as these big projects get, start to get contemplated, we have, we have a way to inform the board that you're thinking about it before you're bringing it to us. I think that it would have been good to be more prepared for this, but I think, hey, this is, this is a really important thing to be doing. And, and we certainly want to get the policies right. But I think leveraging the power of the different CCAs in a, in a way that benefits us and benefits them, and each of them would look at it from their own perspective, is extremely valuable.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Laura, Laura Palmer-Lohan's got her hand up, go ahead, Laura.
All right, thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it. So this, this conversation, I think, is really helpful to, for me to kind of elucidate where we are and what the potential opportunities are with this agreement. And I do value the potential benefits that this arrangement can bring to Peninsula Clean Energy and the realization of our vision for 2025. At the same time, I think it's important that we balance this against protecting Peninsula Clean Energy's respective interests, and those that we represent, right? Because for the most part, all of us on this board are elected officials. And I am thinking that, you know, if we could put a little bit more teeth into this agreement, I think that would be helpful. I do concur with the sentiments that were raised in public comment tonight, as well as some of my colleagues on the board, with respect to ensuring that we're protecting the working members of our community with respect to prevailing wage. So if there's an opportunity to tighten those provisions up, and kind of what the expectations are from us. In addition, I think the weighted average vote is, I think that's critical. I mean, I'm thinking of this as somebody who works in corporate America, I've been a sponsored business owner myself, to make sure that the terms of the agreement serve kind of our interests. So in other words, what we're going to get out of it, we make sure we get back, right? In terms of it, kind of the ROI piece of it, if you will. And I think that weighted average vote would, would help with that. And then I would, I would also concur with respect to process when it comes to, you know, larger projects that are complicated in nature, to providing the board with, you know, and I think it's appropriate if we're, the executive committee, a smaller quorum, to kind of help tease out some of these issues in advance, so that we're not at the late hour trying to sort through this. So thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective. And again, I appreciate this discussion.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. Purdeep's got his hand up, go ahead, Purdeep.
But, thank you, Jeff. Just to clarify...
But thank you, Jeff. Just to clarify, Jan, there are two kinds of representation of PCE in the JPA. One, as a member of JPA, where you have one vote as a member of their board. And the other one is after a project is defined by the by the CC power and we are a member of that group, that project group. In that case, when we are a member of that group, would we still have just one vote in the in the power power project decisions? Or will that be or could be changed to be weighted depending on whose interest is higher or lower on the project itself? Thank you.
Well, the way it's put together, and if you can show the that little chart again. Let's see, think, is it in the answer? So in so in phase one, which is when a project is being considered at all, and those CCAs that are interested in it would go through the RFO process and learn what what the project would cost and all of that. In that case, it's it's one one member, one vote. After the project is defined, so in phase two, those CCAs that are interested in continuing with the project, they'd help to pay for a percentage. It actually doesn't define the voting. It defines how the costs are going to be shared. And those are going to be shared based on the load, the project share of the prod project. So I don't know. I'll ask Ilana or David, who were involved in the discussions of how the JPA agreement itself was put together, is the intent that because the costs are being allocated based on the ownership or the, you know, participation percentage of the project, with the voting follow that same logic. I don't think it's specifically addressed in the JPA agreement, but that's why I asked them.
Yeah, I'll I'll take that. It's so the JP agreement does not determine how voting will happen in phase two or phase three. That probably that will be, you know, there's there's going to be room to negotiate how voting works for a particular with respect to a particular project in those project agreements. So there there will be some opportunity down the line to negotiate voting by, you know, allocation or share of a project.
I understand. Just to give you an example, perhaps you can hypothetically suppose a project like pump storage goes forward and PCE is 50% owner of the project. And there are three other members who are allocated the remaining 50%. In case those three three other members want to delay the project for some reason, which may not be favorable to PCE, would that be considered three versus one vote or it could be negotiated at the stage of phase two?
Yeah, so so that would be outlined in an agreement amongst those CCAs that at that point, you know, are participating. So at this point, that is not that's not predetermined. It would it would be up to those member CCAs to negotiate amongst themselves how that how that's going to work.
But the scope as as it is defined now allows that kind of discussion and decision making later on, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Carlos, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I let me see if I can get to my PDF here. So I think it's question nine, tries to address the issue of cross collateralization, particularly if a entity is not involved in a in a project. So really, how comfortable are we that indeed if PC decides not to be involved in a project and then there's a project that goes bad and we happen to have, as we do presently, fairly strong assets? What are the possibilities of people coming after us? And, you know, are there is there can you guys point to case law that actually shows that indeed that 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 cross collateralization has been pierced in the in the the protection dealing with cross collateralization has been pierced previously and are there ways around it? I mean, it it is worrisome. I mean, when people know that there are deeper pockets and we have some of the deepest pockets right now of the players, it's a concern. That's one question. So can somebody answer that?
Since your question asked to is it, can we point to case law? I will look at the lawyers here to respond to that, please.
Well, how sure are we that that we can actually be protected?
You know, Do you want to take that along or do you want me to do it?
All right, I'll take it. You can add in anything that I that I forget. I am, there's there's going to be some risk that is not going to be possible to contract away. And I I think by virtue of forming this new entity and, you know, taking advantage of the benefits that provides, there is going to be an outside risk of that of that scenario that you've described. I I can't say that I can point to, you know, I haven't done a deep dive into the case law, but there have been examples with other similar super JPAs that that operate similarly and have structured their contracts in a similar way with with a lot of indemnity provisions. That, you know, I I don't think there have been many instances of of kind of the the piercing scenario that you're talking about. I think for the most part, those have gone smoothly. But again, there is just there is no way to guarantee zero risk. And I can, you know, I can certainly look into the case law there and do a deeper dive.
The only thing I would add, Carlos, is that, and I don't know that this is necessarily comforting, but PCE is going to be more protected in the super JPA than the cities that make up Peninsula Clean Energy are protected with respect to Peninsula Clean Energy. And what I mean by that is that there's really good protection already, which is in in the government code. When you form a JPA, one of the things the government code does is it lets the it lets the members of the JPA. I mean, I guess the easiest way to say is basically segregate all of their all of their assets and say that the that the that the liabilities of the JPA are just the JPA. So when we form PCE, like when most JPAs are formed, we said that, you know, the cities aren't on the hook. PCE is on the hook. So we're now doing the exact same thing with the super JPA, right? The super JPA, the 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 assets and liabilities of the super JPA are just that of the super JPA. So, you know, to the extent that, you know, someone came after us, they wouldn't just be piercing some sort of legal structure. They'd have to be piercing the government code, which specifically allows that structure. But in addition to that, what is contemplated, and I think there was some discussion of this at the last meeting, is, you know, the development agreements and the agreements between the parties are also going to have liability contractual liability waivers. So not only do we have the government code that protects us, we're also going to have contractual liability waivers that protect us. So, you know, what I often say to my clients is anybody can sue anybody for any reason. But there's there are multiple layers of protection for PCE.
Thank you. So that I'm somewhat at ease on that that issue. So that my second question has to do with has San Jose and San Francisco signed, so CPSF is the San Francisco Clean Power SF, is that correct? That's that's a San Francisco entity?
Yes.
Yeah. And so now now I'm turning to the labor issue. So where is SF on this labor issue? They are a far stronger labor community and city than we are. Are they aware of the kind of lack of of, you know, significant labor? I don't know if we call them standards in this super JPA where I because I think that they they may wind up also having, as well as San Jose possibly, but but certainly SF having significant concerns on the labor side. Do do we know? Have they been to these meetings? Have they have they just kind of at least shared their position on on this labor issue?
Well, first of all, San Jose has San Jose City Council approved this, so they are part of the JPA. San Francisco will be taking this up in February. So this, what we're asking for approval here is to be is is approval of the JPA agreement. So any additional terms of the or operating principles for the JPA itself are not included in this JPA agreement. This is just the formation document. So those other conversations about what should the JPA's labor policy be? You know, what should our environmental policies be? Those discussions have not yet been held because the JPA isn't formed yet. And and that's where those discussions will be held. And that's that's where that'll be determined. It's those kinds of decisions or policies are not part of the formation document for the JPA itself.
So for the present RFO, so there is a an RFO out right now, is that correct?
That's correct. It's actually closed. The proposals have come in.
Okay, so for that RFO, then, the rules around labor or environmental concerns have not been wrapped into that request for that correct?
Right, that, well, I guess what I'd say is that that project is still in the phase one stage. So the RFO was issued. The responses are coming in and a shortlist will be put together. And those CCAs that are interested in moving into phase two would then move forward with it, and that's when the negotiations will start. So if we decide that we're interested in continuing with that process, that would be the time for us to say, okay, we we would like to see the specific labor and environmental requirements be a part of this project. And we would like to have the developer respond as to how they're going to meet those requirements and, you know, have a majority of the CCAs who are moving forward in that second phase support that.
So this is Jan, just I wanted to clarify something. You're talking about the RFO, which we entered into with several other CCAs for long term long duration storage. Is that the
Yeah.
what we're talking about?
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
So that the RFO itself did not actually, for example, it certainly didn't include policy 10 in the RFO. It just said, I mean, it just said something along the lines of you'll be expected to comply with any, any, anyone you contract with within this group will will have to enforce their own policies on labor or environment or anything else.
I don't recall what the specific wording was in that.
This, I can jump in. This is Siobhan. I don't think we included specific wording, but what we've talked about at the like director level is that for the long, I think we'll have like a long list and then a shortlist that we would send those questions to our longer list, all the questions that we've outlined in our policies. And then we can collect that information and make a decision on whether or not we want to move forward with those projects for PCE.
Carlos, go ahead. Were you, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, just yeah, just just one one quick question then. So in the future, if we issued additional RFOs, each RFO would contain the conditions that the super JPA agreed to put in them so so that there or is it possible to actually establish some sort of prevailing wage labor policy that would then be applied to all further RFOs or requests?
Yeah, ideally, it would be a policy of CC power that any project that we're interested in needs to pay prevailing wage and needs to follow certain environmental requirements. And in the future, it would be more efficient to include that in the initial RFO that goes out so that the bidders know exactly what the policies were. Because this one went out before the JPA was formed and before we had the opportunity to really dig into that together. That wasn't the case, but as Siobhan notes, that's part of the follow up for the proposals that have come in.
Thank you. I'm I'm done for now, Jeff. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Carlos. Okay, Donna's got her hand up. Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you. So I really, I want to, I want to thank staff for answering all those questions. They were very helpful, so I don't I don't have a lot of questions. But I did notice one thing, and this sort of plays off of Councilman Benia's question. Interestingly, as I've been looking through minimum wage ordinances throughout our county and in some other cities, the one thing that I've noticed that I consider to be a loophole is that many of the workers that are covered in collective bargaining are a lot of these minimum wage ordinances exempt the collective bargaining labor unions from having to pay minimum wage in excess of the state level. So if Burlingame raises their minimum wage, for example, when the law came to us, there was an exemption in there, and I see Redwood City has it, San Mateo has it, Palo Alto has it, that both allows for the payment of apprentices and learners at below minimum wage for the first 160 hours of the of the local jurisdiction, as well as anyone covered in a collective bargaining unit. And I personally think I find that to be a loophole. I think if we're going to, you know, I really don't want to see whether it's prevailing wage or union, you know, P project labor agreement. I don't think that we should be paying anyone less than the local jurisdiction's minimum wage. And I hope we can, you know, clean that language up as we talk about this in the in the negotiations, Jan, and I'm happy to point it out to you and share with you what we did in Burlingame. We we made that change.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or or questions for staff?
I have one last one.
Sure.
Sure. With regards to what I just heard from Councilmember Coulson, what she says is has to do with minimum wage. And what we're talking about is prevailing wage, which is when it's required, it's required. It has nothing to do with the minimum wage. And everybody's entitled to their opinion about how the minimum wage laws that have recently been acted in nine out of 20 cities in this county work. But for whatever reason, the city counties who are actually creating these new policies, increasing minimum wage, have seen fit to include that part of it. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just, I mean, I'll just weigh in a couple of things. So we've talked a fair amount about policy 10. And I just, you know, I think, you know, I I support policy 10, obviously. And I just, you know, I think, you know, I, I support policy 10, obviously. And I don't think I can envision us ever entering a project. We wouldn't insist on policy 10 as part of the, the terms of that project. I am comfortable with this agreement because I don't think that this JPA agreement is, the, the agreement itself is the place for something like a policy 10 or the environmental changes we're talking about. I think there's, the places for that would be in bylaws that this organization forms. I mean, our policy 10, we didn't adopt it until after we'd formed the JPA, just for comparison. So, I mean, there's a difference between the, the framework that you form with the JPA and what you actually do within it. I'm also comfortable with it because anything we, you know, we always have the option to walk away from a project if it looks like the developers aren't going to meet our environmental or our labor standards. My guess is that if we push this sort of labor standards on the JPA, that some of the other partners would accept them and some of them would not. At this stage, I think some of them would probably say they don't want it in the JPA, but they'd be willing to, they, they are actually comfortable with it going forward. I suspect that, that San Francisco, for example, probably wants to enforce their labor, wants to enforce their labor policies further down the line, but would probably consider this without them in the JPA agreement itself. So I just wanted to be clear that what we're, what we're agreeing to in joining CC power is really the bare framework of an organization and that, you know, a lot of the real checks and balances we exert happen downstream from this point. And that's, that's the one thing I'll say. Anne Schneider, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Chairoffs, for that. Do you think that could be put into a question and added to the FAQ? Because I had forgotten that you establish a CCA, then you create the bylaws and all those discussions that we had. That makes me feel much more comfortable. So I appreciate that, that comment.
As soon as council and staff assure me that I haven't screwed anything up in asserting that, yes, yes.
Thank you. I have to sign off now. Everyone, keep safe.
Thanks, Anne. Take care. And, and here's David to tell me that I screwed up.
You are assured.
Oh, well, thank you. You know, the other thing I was going to say is, you know, the alternative to this, if we were to not join CC power, you know, we've, we've been contracting for projects for a few years. And, I mean, some of us have been intimately involved. Well, staff has been the most intimately involved. Some of us have been looking over their shoulders for quite a while. It's complicated. It's, it's time consuming. This, this gives us a chance to see some projects. And frankly, I mean, there's, there's projects out there that we, we have no, we could not possibly consider joining onto our, signing up for ourselves because they are too big and we need to be diversifying. This gives us a set of options without, in my opinion, compromising our ability to continue to adhere to our standards and our policies. I, I think if we were to not join this in the long run, we'd be putting a lot of burden on staff to perform a lot of these similar functions without sort of the assistance of this umbrella organization. So I think there's a very real, I, I understand the concerns about doing it. I just want to point out there are, in my mind, there are some risks of not doing it. So I, I just want to, just want to present that other side of the argument. Not that I see a lot of strong opposition, but I do see that there are concerns and I do understand them. Other questions or comments? And again, we're not taking action on this. This is a discussion. Further questions? If you, you're, you're more than welcome to direct staff to, to answer other questions between now and the board meeting when we do consider it or make other comments right now. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. So one last call. If that's the case, then I don't see any. I think we're done with this item for tonight. I believe, did we include, sorry, I'm just trying to get back to the agenda. Did we have a, did we have staff reports on this? Or do we have committee reports at the end of this one? Or is this the last item?
This is the only item.
This is the only item. Okay. Okay, if that's the case, and there are no other comments or questions, I believe we could adjourn. I want to, I just want to, yeah, I just want to thank staff and, and council for, for their help on this again. Thanks, and thank you all for your time on this. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.